Please rise for a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call Almudomity.
Here.
Alwood and Rayncrey?
Here.
Alwood and Corbett is absent. Alm Turner?
Here.
Alm Bill?
Here.
Alm Lewis?
Here.
Can I get a motion to approve the approval of November 4th, 2025 meeting minutes, please?
Show me.
Have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I get a motion approval of tonight's agenda?
So.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Special items, we have none. Apologies to the boards and commissioners, we have none. Scheduled public comments, just before we get started, just a reminder that all special of special all scheduled public comments should be entered by Wednesday meeting before the meeting. First of all, we're going to introduce is Danny and Ricky McKee. Would one of you like to stand to the podium?
Yeah.
Please state your name and address. And gentlemen, just before we get started, we do have a rule, it's a three-minute timeframe, okay? Appreciate it. All right.
My name's Rick McKee, this is my brother Danny McKee. I live out on MM. My brother Danny lives down in West Snowy Hills. Some of you probably remember us from about a month ago, he was here at a meeting about the flooding at my mom's house. Up here tonight to get an update. We was told after the meeting that someone would be getting ahold of us in a week, someone would contact us. I've not heard a word from anybody. So I'm up here tonight to kind of see what the update is with the situation.
Normally, we don't interject during these comments, but I will let you know that Kevin and I met at your mom's place last Friday. Kevin has a meeting to go back to your neighbors this coming Friday, then we'll regroup after that, and then we'll get back to you on Monday.
That's a public works director. Did the engineer get a chance to walk over there?
Just scheduled.
Yeah.
Why wasn't I called where I could walk it with her if I had any questions?
It's not hard work.
I was told somebody would get ahold of me a week after the meeting, and it's been a month.
I apologize for that, sir, but we will get ahold of you on next Monday, I promise.
So are they planning on going in there? We've been told that they're going to go in there and clean out the basin, which is on my mom's property. I think everybody thinks it's on the neighbors, but it's on my mom's property, where it goes into the pipes. Are they planning on cleaning that out, what we heard, and going down at the end of that road and knocking that term down, which I mean, that's that's that may help a little, but it ain't going to keep it out of that house.
Is in fact, that basin, which was constructed, I guess, by private individuals, you yourself or no?
It was constructed by the gentleman that owned the house before the pickets.
Okay, in that case, I need to get a temporary construction, basically, permit from you guys verbal, so I could move into there. We'll talk offline for sure, you got my phone number, but the neighbor seems to think it might be theirs, so we'll work that out. But either way, all I need is permission to work on that property. Again, all of this is private property, except for the end of sunshine, and that's a different matter. But that is the plan, to clean that up, get some of the dead wood out of there, to re-bermit, recreate it, and we can talk more offline, but I don't think that basin is doing anybody any good either.
No, I agree with you, it's not doing any good, and it will help the water move through there faster. But as I said in the first meeting, that's not the problem with my mom's. The problem is to the northeast, coming from the storage sheds, the vet lakes. It's got worse since those were constructed. And the more construction that goes on up there, the worse it's going to be. So, yes, it will help out a little bit, moving it through there faster, but that has nothing to do with the amount of volume and the velocity of the water coming from the north. That's the issue.
And you gentlemen have come, and we appreciate the insight. Apologies, we're not ignoring you deliberately. I understand your mom passed, is that right?
Yeah.
My condolences on behalf of the city. I don't wish to pry into your affairs. Is there a probate matter? Who's the owner of the property?
I'm the power of attorney, I'm the owner of that.
Okay, you have full due date of inheritance. Well, again, nothing was meant to be intentionally disrespectful or anything like that. We do have a plan moving forward, we'll make sure to contact you.
Thanks, guys.
Appreciate y'all.
All right, next on the list is Corey Myers. Please state, come to the podium, state your name and address. And you missed the first comment, there is a three-minute rule policy.
Okay.
So, come on in.
Corey Myers, and what else you want?
Address.
Address, 22635 South Coons. I've got a copy. This for everyone to look at. Hopefully I got enough. Do you need one, or can you share?
Okay, because I'm out. You're all right.
So this is the, this first picture is the retention pump of the building just at. You can see trees are in there. There's not supposed to be trees in there. It's not being maintained. The second picture is, I went over there and shot great on these pipes that the flow of water comes out of. And the elevation is, this is hard to read on this picture, but it's three foot wide. The next picture, I couldn't get my phone to work, but it was six inches higher where we shot great. You can see this picture, this is all where that water is supposed to come out of. It's never been maintained. It's full of silt, trees, and debris. This next picture is between 609 Caspian Drive and 611 Caspian Drive. That's a discharge pipe as well. You can see it's full. I'm sorry, that's a long picture, that is not between 609 and Caspian, that's off, that's off Justin Lane. There's another one between 609 and Caspian and 611, I don't have that picture, but it's full of water also. And it goes in that same retention. This is off Justin Lane. And... No, that is off, that is the right picture, it's full. This next picture shows my subdivision, Middle Creek, and Lake. And where the affected area of this easement and new pipes are going to take place. On there, I drew at a high, a house site that I have on the property now. I dug a basement there about four months, or eight months ago, and still haven't been able to get a permit for this property. Darren, I've been, we've been arguing about this. I went there one time, and the basement was dug, and he said that if I signed that easement, that he'd give me a permit. The next page, this is off Justin, it's another discharge pipe. This gentleman that owns this, the houses there is Tony McCoy.
Mr. Meyer, next three minutes, if you want to finish your thought.
Yeah, the next page is what Tony says, this is a text message. That's what he was told when he asked, asked the city to do it. The next page is another text message from him. And the next page, I guess I don't have enough time to go through this.
We're happy to have the package, thanks.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming.
All in public hearing, we have none. Introductions are first reading, council bill number 2025-39. An ordinance authorizing the acceptance of easements on Founder's Ridge Lot 1, 6, and 7. Staff and court, please.
All right, so what we have here is a situation where we had a small detention basin that has since been removed, the developer changed engineers, and in doing so, he was able to get rid of a small detention basin which resided on Lot 1 of Founder's Ridge. And since this was already plotted, we had to create new easements for the stormwater pipe to be installed. That is, to help out the drainage from between Lots 1 and 6, there's a new easement created that goes through Lot 7 to discharge the water. So if the board agrees with staff recommendation, this ordinance should be passed. That's allowing for the dedication and replacement drainage easement on Lots 1, 6, and 7, part of the founder's subdivision. Questions?
Any questions for staff?
Have you been out there eyeballed it, it looks like the right thing to do there?
Yes, yes, getting, getting rid of detention apparently is what I needed to correct.
Any other questions for staff? Can I get a motion of approval, council bill number 2025-39, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of the easement for Founder's Ridge, Lots 1, 6, and 7.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Alwood and Rayncrey?
Aye.
Alm Turner?
Aye.
Alm done with you?
Aye.
Alm Bill?
Aye.
Alm Lewis?
Aye.
Council bill number 2025-40, an ordinance vacating drainage easements for Founder's Ridge.
So along with the replacement easements, we need to vacate the old ones, which was the detention pool. And so the board agrees.
Got it. Can I get a motion of approval, council bill number 2025-40, an ordinance vacating the drainage easements for Founder's Ridge. So moved. Have a second?
Second.
Alm Bill?
Aye.
Alwood and Rayncrey?
Aye.
Alm Turner?
Aye.
Alm Lewis?
Aye.
And Alm Dumey?
Aye.
Moving on to old business, ordinance number 1536, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of easements Founder's Ridge, Lots 1, 6, and 7. Second?
Same thing. Second rate.
Can I get a motion of approving, ordinance number 1536, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of easements Founder's Ridge, 1, 6, and 7. So moved. Can I get a second?
Second.
Alm Bill?
Aye.
Alm Rayncrey?
Aye.
Alm Turner?
Aye.
Alm Dumey?
Aye.
Alm Lewis?
Aye.
Ordinance 1537, ordinance vacating the drainage easements on Founder's Ridge. Second. Got it. Can I get a motion of approving, ordinance number 1537, an ordinance vacating the drainage easements for Founder's Ridge.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Alm Rayncrey?
Aye.
Alm Bill?
Aye.
Alm Lewis?
Aye.
Alm done with you?
Aye.
Alm Turner?
Aye.
All right. Moving on to new business, resolution number 2025-57, a resolution authorizing the sale of surplus property, a 1998 Dodge pickup on gov.deals.
Thank you, Mayor and the board. Seeking authorization to sell a 1998 Dodge pickup on gov.deals.com. This is a sewer department vehicle, we have in inventory. Since 1998, it has 131,000 hard miles on it. Heavily rusted, with numerous issues that are no longer cost effective to address. So again, seeking authorization to sell the vehicle on internet auction, gov.deals.com. This vehicle was replaced by another used city vehicle in an interdepartmental transfer when the water department bought a new truck earlier this year, so it was replaced by a vehicle that had a few years left on it. There's a picture of this ram, yeah, page 28, 29 in your packet. It's pretty rough, we just maybe get a thousand bucks worth, maybe. And I recommend approval.
All right. Any questions for staff?
I will move for the approval of the resolution.
Can I get a motion of approval, resolution 2025-57, a resolution authorizing the sale of surplus property, 1998 Dodge pickup. Have a second?
A second.
Alm Mayor?
Aye.
Resolution number 2025-58, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a lift station panels.
Thank you, Mayor. It's actually the purchase of three lift station panels. The three oldest lift station control panels reside in town at Selinda Park. Justin Lift Stations is the name that implies, Selinda's at the end of. Selinda Park is in the middle of the city park, and Justin is at the end of Justin. These are lift stations, part of the sewer collection system. These panels essentially control the operation and activate alarms in the event of a malfunction. These are the three oldest panels, we have in inventory, they're late 80s, early 90s vintage. They've outlived their expected service life for these kind of components. They have become troublesome, maintenance intensive, and they are responsible for most of the callouts that we get, these three stations. These are the hotspots because of electrical malfunctions. There's relays, there's contactors, there's even the wiring themselves inside these panels have gotten, so we can't even track down exactly what's causing some of the malfunctions, but they're due. So this is a proposal that replaces all three to modern controls and stainless steel NEMA 4 panels. They also include incoming voltage meters, that's stuff on our side for safety and for quick troubleshooting. Two quotes were obtained for this proposal, and it is less than half of the high quote, which was $63,466. This quote for all three stations is $27,955, you can see on the cover sheet. They're very similar in horsepower, and the only difference between these panels is the main breaker, and that's the only difference in cost. You can see Selinda is a 10-horse, and that's a couple hundred dollars more than the park in the Justin Lift Station panel. Any questions?
Any question for staff? Can I get a motion of approval, resolution 2025-58, a resolution authorizing the purchase of three lift station panels. So moved. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution number 2025-59, a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a six-month combined financial statement. Staff and court, please.
This is an annual thing that we do for our requirements under Missouri law. Our SMO 79160 requires fourth-class cities to prepare a semi-annual financial statement. We publish this financial statement in the local newspaper, as well as our city website, to ensure that residents have public access and the city's financial information promotes our transparency and meets statutory requirements.
Any questions for staff? Can I get a motion of approval, resolution number 2025-59, a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a six-month combined financial statement.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next one is report from Jeff Eller, water supervisor, on emergency repair and maintenance expenses for water department.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. I just want to give you a report on the emergency valve insertion that we had to, we had to complete. So tip, on October 3rd, 2025, the waters department staff received a call from Emmer Sapp and Stone, they were doing the tie-in. They're the contractor for the developer of giver storage, notifying us that they were ready for their tie-in. We went over, tried shutting down some valves, they weren't shutting down. We shut down, fast forward through some of this, I mean, we shut down as many as 21 valves. They weren't shutting down. We couldn't get it below 25 PSI, and you're not going to be able to do anything with that, there's just going to be too much water coming in to do anything. And so, we contacted a company on Thursday, November 6th, MB Construction, they're out of Monticello, Missouri. They specialize in valve insertion. What I mean by valve insertion is, that means a, like in this instance, there is a 12-inch live main that water is flowing through, and they do it live. You're not shutting any water down. You have no customers out of water while they're going in. Like I said, MB Construction crew arrived at 8:00 AM on the 11th. They completed the 12-inch main insertion in about two and a half hours. And then we also did another 8-inch valve insertion just south of there, so that we could have more isolation. And that one took them roughly about three hours. City crews also performed all the excavation, and that saved us quite a bit of money when it come to digging it with the mobilization fees. These insertions ensure that Emmer Sapp can completely tie in, and also ensure the city staff and to have the ability to discontinue water service to the affected area if the city should need to do so for any future repair work or service extensions. The insertion of the two new valves allows us to isolate sections of the main that we weren't able to. And we found out that we were unable to isolate the valve due to valves being faulty. I don't know if faulty is the correct word, but either way, the valves aren't closing down on the pipe enough to keep water from flowing. But the new valves will allow us to isolate, like I said, the North Tower from the north of it and the south of it. The number of valves, like I said, were 21. So that will be, I will be putting that in my CFP budget for next year, whether that's replacing all 21, or, you know, 6. It just kind of depends on what we, what we get into whenever we start going through them.
So what is the life expectancy on these valves, how long have we had that?
These were, these were all done in 95. All the way down north Henry Clay. Life expectancy, I don't know that there's an actual, like, X number of years. I mean, they, some could be 10, some could be 50. And I'll tell you, we have some that are over 50 in this town. But it's, there's not really a set, like, 20 years. So unfortunately, there isn't for the case like this, that we could say, oh, well, they're 25 or 30 years old, they should be, we should be able to get them to 40, and we can't, so. In the report, I did put in some pictures, I did label it, the first ones there, the 12-inch valve insertions, before, like, as they're doing it, and then afterwards, when it was completely done. This isn't finished grade, we will have to go back once it settles and clean it all back up, but I want to let it settle first before we just go in there and start, you know, dragging over everything. And then, like I said, the other one is the 8-inch valve insertion. And then, beyond, beyond that is a map, that is our DAS mapping system that we have. Those are a map, there's two of them there, of all the valves that were shut down to try to get this to stop, and it wouldn't, so. With that being said, I wanted to let you know there will be a budget adjustment to reallocate the $25,680 from capital equipment, and it will go to capital expenditures to cover the cost of the two valve insertions. This adjustment does not increase total expenditures. For the fiscal year, it is simply a reallocation of funds to appropriate the budget for the line for the payment.
Thanks, sir.
Moving on to reports, Mayor's report, all I have is from the park board, they just want everybody to know that the Christmas parade is on December 13th, if you plan to attend, please sign up. Moving on to city's administrative board.
No reports tonight.
City attorney's report?
No report.
Police chiefs monthly.
Well, thank you, of course, with SQB, Joe authorized the liquidation of some property. We had a radar trailer, a blown-up engine police car, and a pile of MBTs, and we've got all those sold now. I actually did just find one, we got $2,150 bucks, all those computers, which surprised me. Other than that, you should, you should have our staff report in your packet. We're humming right along, as far as I know. Given it's always a little bit scary, but, you know, people ask me how I'm doing, so if you haven't heard, we're doing well, so. As far as I know, everything's okay.
Probably full of staff now?
We are, yeah.
Thanks, sir. What'd you get from the blown-up car?
$775, yeah, and they got to come pick it up. So, we got $2,150 out of the computers, and then, what, $650 for the radar trailer?
That sounds right, yeah.
And oddly enough, it's actually going to continue on as a radar trailer, it's going to a Boy Scout camp. Apparently they have an extensive private road network that they need people to slow down on, and so they think they've got, it won't be able to do the data collection it used to do, but they think they'll be able to have it just as a visual deterrent, so. Still going to be useful life.
Good job, thanks, sir.
Any questions?
Chief, I have one question for you.
Yeah.
So as you know, I did a ride-along last week, and I was talking to multiple of the officers throughout, and they mentioned that probably the greatest need for the police force as we continue to grow as a city is having two officers on every shift, and some of them spoke of, like, you know, having instances where they were in a physical altercation, and then having 30 minutes to wait pretty much on backup to arrive. How immediate do you see us, immediately do you see us needing a second officer on every patrol? And what would that, how will that impact your budget?
It's interesting that you mention this, because I've not had meetings with Mr. Michael yet, but that is something I'm going to present this year. I, quite frankly, from what I understand of the budget, I don't think it's realistic that we could do it, but I think that I have a responsibility to share that need. But the issue we have, the, it's not a matter of call load, right? We can, the officers we have, we can handle the calls that come in, the crime we have, we can handle all that. The problem we have is that, I hate to use it, there is no national standard, but generally, in larger departments, calls that they mandatory send two officers to. We have, frequently have officers going by themselves, and that's just kind of the nature of the beast. Our partners, Boone County Sheriff's Department is wonderful. They help us every chance they get, and with every resources they have, same with the highway patrol. But, you know, at any given point in time, there's one trooper working in Boone County, maybe two. It's a long way from here to the north end of the county. And as you know, it's a longer way now than it used to be, at least for another couple of years till they get all the construction fixed. And same thing with Boone County, you know, there's, there's, at any given point in time, there may be one deputy south of Highway 63 or two. Just, just depends on how their calls are handled, those guys, they have to cover a lot of ground, and so sometimes it takes a long time. And so it is scary, I'm terrified of it every day. You know, odds are in our favor, but I think we still have a responsibility to start, just like we talked about with the transportation plan, that we'd all love to snap our fingers and see that we don't have the gazillions of dollars to do it, and it won't happen if we don't start talking about it. So that is one of the things I'm going to present this year to Mr. Michael and the board in a longer-term strategic plan of how to start thinking that way, of getting to the point. And for us to do that, I think it would require a minimum of four officers. And the odd thing about our business is being 24/7, you know, if you run an eight-to-five Monday through Friday business, and you need to add one body, you can hire one body. Well, when you're running 24/7, 365, if everything goes right, it takes six people. You have to hire six employees to add one spot. And, and you do the math, right? Because the, the, you gotta cover the weekends, you gotta cover twenty-four hours, you gotta cover Christmas. And ultimately to add one body twenty-four hours a day, you have to hire six police officers.
And unfortunately, I know the chief knows this, the most expensive municipal employees behind paramedics are policemen. I mean, the real world costs, salary, training, insurance, equipment, they're very, very expensive. I mean, a hundred thousand dollars is not an unreasonable amount of money per officer. And that's, you know, all told, all in.
It's a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars just to equip and pay one officer for one year. And that doesn't count the cost of vehicles, vehicle maintenance, cost of living increases. In some cases, they have to have equipment replaced yearly, training. Those are all additional costs to that.
It's terribly expensive.
So, very much so expensive. The chief and I have both been working on this. We will have come up with a capital improvement plan. We cannot do anything until we get more commercial income coming in. You have to understand, the city of Ashland is not rich by any means. We have currently eight million dollars in the bank that we can actually use. And that is one year of service for the city.
The issue of us agreeing that it would be better to have more is easy, right? We'll all be able to do that.
Is there one particular shift that is more problematic? You know, if you started to slowly build it, you know?
I don't, I don't think so. Um, I, I think if, if you were to, if you could somehow give me two more right now, they'd be on nights. We, we would, we would add people at night. Because there just are a few extra, um, I mean, I'm around in the daytime more than I'm around at night. That's true of, the county has process servers at time. There's just a few more bodies in the daytime that can be available. And, and so, and of course, in general, on, on average, there's no violent crime at night than there is in the daytime. So that would be the statistically the smart place to do it. And again, I, I don't want to give the wrong impression. We're keeping up with the work, right, that's coming in. That, that's not the difficulty. The scary thing is just from a safety standpoint and a, and a longer term. And, and even though you, you wouldn't know it, again, watching the news, but the actual fatality rate for small police departments is no lower than big police departments. It's pretty steady all the way across from huge departments down to small ones if they tell you the rate's about the same. And so, you know, still legitimate safety concerns that, that I have with these, these young, young men and women out there. And I know we all share that. I appreciate you riding along. The guys are very complimentary. The guys and the else. Said, had good questions and, yeah, very good, thank you.
Had a great time, very positive experience.
Appreciate it.
I'd let you run the sirens.
I told him, let's drive. She told me you couldn't like that.
You're not insured, sorry.
That's okay. I, I don't think I want that responsibility.
Do we have any questions? More questions, thank you.
Appreciate it, sir.
Final questions?
Can we have a development director's report?
Report's in your packet. Anybody have any questions about it?
Yeah, when can I schedule a ride along for community development?
Anytime, anytime. But you're allowed.
Anytime, you just can't drive.
Thanks. Let me know.
All right. Moving on to treasurer's report.
Uh, my report is in the packet. Somebody asked about staffing. We recently hired Ike Case. He's been hired as the wastewater supervisor, a newly created full-time position responsible for overseeing the wastewater treatment plant. He started on November seventeenth. We're very happy to have him. He comes with great references and awesome credentials. Archie Hendren has been hired as a utility worker one in the streets division. We converted a two position into a one position, so they are now fully staffed. Uh, and he's expected to start December first. Both of these gentlemen came from the city of Columbia. Both of them have twenty-plus years of experience. So we are very excited to have them. Megan Young, uh, who was the police clerk for the last sixteen years, requested and was granted a transfer to the utility billing administrative assistant position. She began her new role on November thirteenth. The only position that we currently have a vacancy for is police clerk and the chief and I are looking into either reorganizing that position or maybe keeping it the same. We're not quite sure yet. It's, but he has two applicants that he'll be interviewing. So we'll have more on that.
All right. Any questions for treasurer? All right, moving on to board of aldermen report. Ottawa Brinkcrack?
The only thing somebody brought to my attention on Pacer Drive. When you turn off a Martin Crump and you enter it, there's a big hole. You go up down Pacer and it's a mess, but on down at the very end by Justin, there's two big holes. They said they thought he was going to break the axle on their car the other day. And I drove down it today and they're not getting it. There are some holes. Pretty nice size. That's all I have.
Arm and Bill?
Uh, just like I talked about earlier, did the ride along. We encourage all of my colleagues to try that if you have. Really reassures you how great of officers we have in Ashland. So I'm really thankful for that opportunity.
We have been invited.
What?
So we have been invited.
I wasn't, I invited myself.
Oh, well then, there you go.
You're all invited.
Yeah, now, now you tell us.
We're just a little out there.
Almer Lewis? No report. Almedonody?
No report.
Almedon?
I just want to thank the city staffs and board of aldermen for coming to the ABC pizza night. Big success. I know the, the organization really appreciates the turnout and that's my report.
Thanks, sir. All right, now we're going to general comments from the public. Is there any comments the public would like to make? Please state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Charles Crandall. I live at six oh seven Caspi Circle. I understand I got three minutes, right?
Yes, sir.
I got a lot to say, but this is not the form for it. But I just want to clarify something. Draw attention to some of you who don't know me, don't know the situation about the Caspi Circle stormwater project. If you look at those pictures that Corey gave to you, the first two need some clarification. So that first pipe is a picture of the pipe that runs north and south at the end of the detention basin. And what's interesting about that is when the project was redone in two thousand and fourteen, I believe, that detention basin was about four feet deeper, had defined walls, you know, on either side. And it retained water. That second picture on page two shows the discharge pipe that comes into his house. When that pipe, as you look at that pipe, the pipe is touching the ground. Okay? And I was shocked. I didn't see, I hadn't seen that myself until just a couple of weeks ago when I met with the city and the engineers at my property. I wish you all could have been there. I do appreciate the city administrator, the mayor for making that. Problem is, when this was originally built and designed, that pipe was two feet off the ground. And it opened up into a spillway. Right now, that spillway is covered in trees. That pipe is on the ground. It spilled in. The problem with this is, and I understand it's the city's intention to abandon this existing infrastructure. This infrastructure worked when it was put in place. Okay? It doesn't work now because the city, and it's nobody's responsibility here. None of you were here at the time that this was built, right? So I'm not casting blame or disparaging. But what I am saying is this system worked when it was built as it was intended. The city failed to maintain it. And so it doesn't work now. Twenty twenty-one, we had a major rain event. For the first time, I've been in that house since two thousand and three, so twenty-one years, or two thousand and four, twenty-one years now. For the first time in twenty twenty-one, I got water in my basement garage. And what happened was the water came through, the surface water came through, water from the detention basin came through, and it wasn't able to exit. If we haven't had a rain event like this, I might get flooded, the traffic's gonna get flooded too. And they were a witness to it. What I didn't recognize at the time, because I hadn't been over there, is that this, as I said, this pipe is on the ground, right? It shouldn't be on the ground. And so the city's getting ready to embark on a new project. They're gonna tear down three or four of, of mature trees, fencing, et cetera, and put three forty-inch pipes on the northern part of my property. I already have two thirty-inch pipes and a drop inlet in that yard. I would encourage all of you to come over and look at it for yourselves.
Sir, can I get the last thoughts?
Yes.
Appreciate it.
I don't think that we need to do that project. I think what we need to do is save them money, redirect that, that grant money into other stormwater areas and fix this problem. If you fix this problem, we might be able to use that money other ways in other areas. So I encourage you, please come over to my house, give me a call. Mayor's got my phone number. Mr. Michael's got my phone number. You've got my phone number. You're welcome too. And I'll walk you through it and I'll give you the twenty-one year history on this. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Any other comments?
Travis Lassiter, six oh five Caspi Circle. So this, this whole stormwater drainage is in our backyard. And we originally came here to get an answer on who was supposed to maintain it because the next three houses are trees that are twenty feet tall, cattails. I mean, it's, the water is standing. It's a mosquito swamp. And it's never been maintained. And that was our original plea was to find out who, who's supposed to maintain this? Is it the yard owners that, that their yard, their property goes back to? Or is it up to the city? Is there an easement? And we've never gotten an answer. And then fast forward, we get a, a notice on our door, we're going to begin construction. So we're going to tear out your fences. And my first question is, and what about our dogs? What if we have kids? Are we going to have temporary fences? There was no immediate. And I think it's because there's, it's been going on for so long, there's new people involved in this. But the common sense of it that I see is if you don't change your oil in any of the maintenance vehicles or any of your vehicles in the city and they all blow up, we're back to the same common sense issue. Well, we didn't, we didn't maintain them, so now we don't have anything. That's what we have here. If it was not maintained, and like Calvin said, not because of your fault, but he's seen it from the very beginning and he's watched it work. And then there's two large pipes. So the consensus to fix it is to add three more pipes and take out this mature row of trees. And when I asked the engineers, okay, will this work? What if it doesn't? Their answer was, well, if it doesn't, we'll go to Plan B. So I said, well, if I get water in my house, are you going to be responsible? And they said, no, it's an act of God. So we're going to be losing all of our real estate and our tree line and the, the, the help of the erosion. And the engineers don't have in mind that Corey built a lake there and a burrum that completely takes all of the water that's on that whole entire mass property that was Fisher property and diverts it down past this pipe. And you can see it in my yard where, where the silt gently cuts through the corner and goes into there. So all of this pipe, everything that it would be catching, everything from that field, and, and they told me while it was videoed that none of that was taken into consideration in the equation that came up with the pipes, the underground pipes for right now. So we've never been notified. I mean, really, it only affects us, Calvin, and Corey. And Corey put the burrum up to take the water off because we were concerned that if he put the subdivision in. So everybody has, or he has made, I think, adequate maneuver to, to keep the water off and it hasn't been brought into the equation. So the equation that the engineers have come up with can't be correct. And this is, by the way, something that crocking engineer have already engineered and the city built and it worked. And now we have Allstate saying, well, this is what has to happen. So is it to say that crocking engineering was wrong? Or did we just not maintain what was supposed to be maintained? We just don't want to lose our trees. It's property, it's value, it's erosion control. You know, especially if it's not necessary and we do it and, and then we're told it didn't work, so we're going to have to go again because I've shot the grade.
Last thought, sir.
So there is very little grade beyond where the pipes stop. The engineering is where the pipes are. And when I ask, what is the plan to clean this up? I was told that the city has a plan, but I don't, I don't know what that plan is or what the maintenance schedule would be. But as of right now, it's not going to do any good. It's going to spend a bunch of money. You're going to have nothing. And then we're still going to have this flooding problem. We're going to be back here again. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Tom, do we know who is legally responsible for maintaining this detention area?
I, I hesitate to answer. Um, there is a, it's a city right of ways, an easement is on their property. It's our pipe. We generally maintain that pipe in terms of the surface area. Uh, I'm happy to give a legal opinion, but I don't want to do that off the cuff. Certainly able to provide these folks with a, a confident opinion. I'm confident it's our pipe. We have to maintain the pipe. As to the state of the, the soil and trees and so on above it, uh, that's a more complicated question.
If you wouldn't mind to take a look into that and give us an answer, um, because I would like to address their concerns, if all possible.
We can do that.
Any other comments from the public? Can I get a motion to go in closed session to discuss chapter six, one, zero, dash, zero, two, one, legal actions in hiring and firing discipline from our technical. And a second?
Second.
Almedonody?
Aye.
Almedon?
Aye.
Almer Lewis?
Aye.
Almer Brinkcrack?
Aye.
Almedon?
Aye.
Back in the open session and we have nothing to report. We have motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, all the favor?
Aye.
Wrong.